Councilmember Castle?
Present.
Councilmember Hamidine? Deputy Mayor Katz?
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Forth?
Here.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Mayor Parker?
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by Resolution 137-2014, setting the 2014 meeting dates, sending a copy to the record in the Jewish Standard, filing the copy in the Township Clerk's office and posting it on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, and the mayor hereby directs that this statement be included in the minutes.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Tonight we also have present with us William Browton, our Township Manager, Jamie Evelina, our Township Clerk, Jennifer Jackson, Senior Clerk, and Stanley Turrets for the law firm Winnie Banta. And we also have, and I'm having a brain freeze moment, our CPA, Christine Brown, our accountant, with us as well tonight. Upcoming events and meetings, our next televised meeting will be August 12 at 7:00 p.m., with the public portion to begin at 8:00 p.m. Our next emergency preparedness seminar will be held on 7:00 p.m., Thursday, August 7, at Teaneck Police Headquarters. Council met and closed session, and we interviewed members of the public for the Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, contract negotiations, legal issues, and negotiation updates. The first item on our agenda tonight is presentations, and we have a special presentation from the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, represented by President Yvonne Witter.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor Parker. As Mayor Parker indicated, my name is Yvonne Witter, and I am the President of the Bergen Passaic Chapter of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women. And I would just like to take a moment to have the members of our chapter that are here today just to stand for a moment. Thank you. For over 28 years, NCBW has faithfully served our communities by advocating on behalf of Black women and girls to promote leadership development and gender equity in the areas of health, education, and economic empowerment. NCBW serves as a nonpartisan voice and instrument on issues pertaining to the appointment of African-American women at all levels of local, state, and federal government. So this is truly a moment for us to celebrate. On behalf of an organization that is now comprised of 61 dynamic women, of which you, Mayor Parker, have been an active member since 2011, we would like to present you with this plaque that reads, "Outstanding Achievement Presented to NCBW Member Mayor Lizette P. Parker, First African-American Female Mayor, Township of Teaneck, New Jersey." First African- I think that's a round of applause again. Appointed July 1, 2014, and presented today, Tuesday, July 15, 2014.
I would just like to thank the organization for this wonderful plaque and for all of the emails, phone calls, letters, bottles of champagne that I've received over the last couple of weeks. I can't even tell you how overwhelmed I am by the sheer outpouring of support and recognition of this honor. I just hope that, in my role as mayor, that I serve you proudly. I thank you for your support, and I encourage you to please come back out to meetings. It's important to see you out in the audience. We need you, you need to be here to see how decisions are made that affect our government. Thank you.
It's not just a plaque, it's an achievement. I've spoken to Lizette probably almost every day, two to three times a day for the last 15 days, as she works very diligently to try to set all the right pieces in the right direction, try to organize the councils, set a vision, set an agenda, and I'm very, very proud to call our mayor and congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
I'd just like to comment that the right person in the right place at the right time will do great things for Teaneck. Congratulations.
Well, now, I have the honor of a very special presentation for a Teaneck resident, and I would ask that Alyssa Sims, please join me. Notice her six gold medals. Alyssa was among more than 3,500 athletes from throughout the United States who competed in the Special Olympics U.S. Games last month. What was special about this year's games is that it marked the first time the national games actually took place in New Jersey. So she represented us very well from Teaneck. Alyssa was born two and a half months prematurely. She has cerebral palsy and a learning disability. However, she has not let those challenges affect her drive to work hard and improve. She has been competing for a little over 10 years in the Special Olympics. Alyssa says that gymnastics helped her to achieve physical excellence and helped her to overcome obstacles in her life. Alyssa, on behalf of the residents of Teaneck and the Township Council, I would like to present this certificate to you to celebrate your accomplishments, as well as your four gold medals. You represent the very best of Teaneck, and we are so proud of you, and we can't wait to see where gymnastics takes you in the future. Congratulations.
I would like to thank my mom and dad for being my chauffeur, and my family for supporting me, and my Aunt Mary for supporting me financially and from distance because she lives down south. And I would like to thank Mayor and the councilmen for inviting me to a very prestigious event.
I want to thank you all for recognizing Alyssa. Alyssa worked so hard for this. She went to gymnastics four days a week, and when she first started, she said, "Mommy, you're going to be proud of me. I'm going to make you proud." And just the fact that she was doing it made me proud. But for her to get five, four gold medal and one silver in gymnastics, she's like the Gabby Douglas of Special Olympics, and she represented New Jersey extremely well. There were only three young ladies on our gymnastics team for New Jersey, and they all did extremely well. But Alyssa really, really, she shined completely. She was a pound and 13 ounces when she was born.
Is there a representative from the North Jhune ADA Greenway Trail? Could you please identify yourself?
Good evening. My name's Mark Fromm. Born, raised, and living in Teaneck, New Jersey. And I'd like to take about five minutes to talk to you about our project, but first
Do you have handouts for council?
The electronic version's been provided to Mr. Browton, and I can provide handouts later if you'd like a printed version.
I'm not for tonight, yes.
I do have a brochure about the Greenway, so if you're not familiar with it, you can refresh this way. I have more slides and the time will permit, so apologies for going too quickly. Okay. Sorry, it's not my computer. The purpose of the project is to use a piece of property that's a part of the Greenway located at 640 River Road to make a connector trail between the River Road and the Hackensack River itself, and to make it handicapped accessible, which is rather unique anywhere and especially in this part of the world. The Greenway's three and a half miles long, it has a lot of history, runs from between our two borders, north to south, mostly along the river, but not always because sometimes there is private land, and if you can walk the whole thing, but you have to go out to the road. There is an advisory board for the Greenway that interfaces with you, and behind them is a 501(c) The Friends of the Greenway, and I speak to you as the Vice President of that organization this evening. The land at 640 River Road is a little bit over an acre. It's acquired by the town. We own it. It connects the River Road to the shore and has a gentle slope down to the river. And we have confirmed with the experts and actually have laid out the physical trail that it can meet all of the requirements at every level, including federal, to make a handicapped accessible, or what they call ADA Trail. Some potential users would be the Five Star Residence, which is just a block away. Right now it's just an overgrown lot, lots of knotweed, and we've started to do some work on it, including some crab apple trees. You'll see in a minute. The picture on the left is standing on River Road and looking towards the Hackensack River. You can glance the river a little bit in the distance, and then from the river looking back up, you can see the crab apple trees lined up there in the picture. And for the audience, and it normally doesn't look anything like this, and knotweed grows up to be six or eight feet high, and it's fully covered right now. We've acquired the services of Tohawas Trails, which is one of two professional trail-building organizations in this part of the country. That means the northeast of the United States. And this is the proposed layout. You can see on the top the crab apple trees and a gently sloping down the incline trail and a loop at the bottom. Right now, that's a mowed grass trail. And this is an earlier drawing done by Mary Tapolsky, who you probably know. She's a professional garden designer, and she laid out a proposal for a sitting area at the top, which is on the left-hand side. And the trail design, of course, has changed, but what's important in this picture is she's laid out different types of plantings, all natural, native plantings. By the way, she designed a garden right outside the entrance of the library. The project team is listed here. And very important is the group of experts that have come together for this project. Mary designed the garden part. Don Torino, you probably know, he's an expert on birding, and he's working on the habitat to be planted along the trail. The Garden Club and the Bergen County Master Gardeners have been involved with Pat Fromm, same last name as mine, and Glenn Chin, landscape architect. And finally, for the trail itself, which is not an easy task, Eddie Walsh of Tohawas Trails, and they're located in New Falls, New York. To help us with some of the fundraising aspects of the project, we are using the services of Barbara Davis at the Land Conservancy of New Jersey. We have the full range of endorsements in a letter form with detailed reasons for each endorsement, and the list is here for you to read probably later. We can provide the letters if you would like as well. The total project cost is estimated at $60,000. Right now, we're in the fundraising stage, and we're making our applications. The biggest percentage, 25%, would come from a Green Acres application. We've been in discussion already with Mr. Browton, and we have the full support to get the documents, that means my time's up, to get the documents prepared. And we're also working with the Township Engineer to make sure we know what permits are required, et cetera. So this is the phase we're in now is fundraising. However, some money's already been put in, the crab apple trees, and from our friends' group, we've paid for the trail design. When the fundraising is done, again, no need to read all this, but there are five phases to the project going right through the continued maintenance of the park. And finally, we come to my reason to be here tonight, besides updating you, and that is as part of the Green Acres funding, it's required that an announcement be published before the last day of this month by the town, saying that you will want to have the Green Acres application made for that funding. The actual hearing can be scheduled for August or after the end of July, but the notification must be done before the end of this month. And that's my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of all the thousands of kinds of trees, there are why crab apple?
For this one, we have to talk to Mr. Torino. But Don Torino has a system where there are four levels of plantings that attract birds and wildlife, and everything from the low grass level, bush level, up to the canopy level. And I would have to check with him why he chose crab apple.
Does any council members have any questions?
Yes. Mr. Castle?
Bear with me, I'm new.
Me too.
So you mentioned earlier in your presentation that it's overgrown right now?
It is with knotweed.
Is there a plan in place to prevent it from overgrowing once all this, say, this were to move forward? Is there a plan in place to keep it from being overgrown again?
That's an excellent question, because knotweed is not easily eradicated, and there are several methods we're almost decided on but not finally, ranging from a chemical method that's used in the fall to a perhaps more preferred method, but labor-intensive. One way is to continuously cut it until it basically gives up, and the other way is to make an attempt to dig it out of the ground. That means to go in, maybe with some DPW equipment, till the soil, and then manually get in there and try to pull those root clumps out. Not easy, but possible.
Does any council members have any objections to scheduling a public hearing at our August 12 meeting? And how much money has been totally raised? I was reading an article that a $25,000 grant was applied for two years ago.
Yes, and that's before I came on the scene. I know that as a result of the Great Recession and of Hurricane Sandy, a lot of money has been diverted for several years and may be just coming back. And so our whole fundraising procedure and process has changed from what was done in years past. And that's why we acquired an expert, Ms. Davis, to help us out.
Sure. Councilmember Pruitt?
You just want us to allow you to be publicized tonight? Is that the case?
Yes, that's correct. It's a requirement of applying for Green Acres funding.
We can do that, and then the hearing is something later on. We don't have an issue with the time on the hearing, but we do have an issue with the time on the publication.
He indicated it has to be done by August.
Before the end of this month, it must be noticed.
Madam Mayor, I suggest we add a consent resolution for tonight, authorizing the hearing for August 12 and authorizing the publication and notices that are required. We could add that if council is in agreement, to add that to the consent agenda. You could take care of that tonight, which will satisfy your requirements, so there will be an official resolution dated today.
Are there any objections from council? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. The next item on the agenda is introduction of ordinances, and I'm going to have Jamie read them into the record, and then I'm going to have the manager just give an overview as to what each of these ordinances are.
Ordinance number 24-2014, calendar year 2014, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. NJSA 40A, colon, 4-45.14. Ordinance number 25-2014, bond ordinance to authorize a 2014 road resurfacing and sidewalk and curb improvement program in, by, and for the Township of Teaneck and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $2,149,000 to pay the cost thereof to appropriate a state grant, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 26-2014, bond ordinance to authorize stormwater drainage improvements and studies at various locations in, by, and for the Township of Teaneck and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $1 million to pay the cost thereof to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 27-2014, bond ordinance to authorize various improvements to municipal by, and for the Township of Teaneck and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $475,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 28-2014, bond ordinance to authorize the acquisition and installation of a township-wide audible alert system and the acquisition of other emergency services equipment in, by, and for the Township of Teaneck and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $300,000 to pay the cost thereof to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 29-2014, bond ordinance to authorize the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment, for the use of the Department of Public Works in, by, and for the Township of Teaneck and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $480,000 to pay the cost thereof to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 30-2014, an ordinance amending section 36-11.2 of Division 1 of Article 2 of Chapter 36, entitled Traffic of the Township Code, adding restricted on-street parking spaces for handicaps on Hywood Street.
Mr. Manager?
Okay. The first ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations cap, this is a complicated ordinance, but I'm going to try to make it very simple. It's an ordinance that we usually try to pass every year to go along with the budget and to assist us in our budget process and in budgeting for future years. The ordinance allows us to establish an appropriations cap bank. Appropriations is spending, so the word appropriations is synonymous with spending. So the spending cap is .5% an annual spending cap. Through this ordinance, it allows us to raise that cap, so to speak, to 3.5% and to bank the difference between the final year's appropriations and 3.5% of those final appropriations, and to put them into a bank for two years and to use them in future budgets. So I hope that everybody understands that, because that's a tricky one. So this year, we're not using any of our appropriations cap, but we need the appropriations cap. It is something that is recommended by the League of Municipalities, by the Division of Local Government Services, because if we don't have enough room to appropriate funds, we could technically actually have revenue and not be able to spend it because we don't have enough room in our cap. So that's the purpose of banking, is it's not having an impact on this year's budget because we're not using any of our previous cap that we have banked. Okay? That's the best way that I can explain that. Any, okay. The second item-
Wait. Sorry. Because it is a complicated ordinance. I just want to make sure I'm clear. So if we don't spend all the money in the budget, is this ordinance saying that we can take whatever we don't spend and put it in the bank account for future use?
No. No. This has nothing to do with how much we actually spend this year. It is saying how much we're saying we're going to spend, okay? So it has nothing to do with the actual money that we're actually spending. So we could, let's say we could go up to $1 million. This is just a hypothetical. Let's say we could go up to $1 million, but in this budget, we're only going to spend $800,000, okay? That difference between the 8 and 200 that we never appropriated, we can use that in a future year to exceed the .5% amount we're allowed to increase spending. So it's not money that we're appropriating and saving, we're just saving the ability to increase our spending in a future year if necessary.
What then keeps us from just saying every year we're going to spend $1 million, and we only intend to spend $800,000 and take that 200 and bank it? dollars when we only intend to spend 800,000 and take that 200 and bank it? And I'm concerned about that because if we're not accurately forecasting, then we'll continue to budget a million dollars, only spend 800,000, and the taxpayers are paying for it.
Well, I would say this to you. There are items that are sometimes in the cap that have been in the cap previously, and now those items are outside of the cap. If we don't have sufficient room for appropriations to meet the cap, we could find ourselves in trouble. And I don't think that passing this ordinance is going to lead to more spending or more appropriations.
It provides the council flexibility should we need it in the future.
Correct.
That's what it does. If we did have to exceed the appropriations cap, it would have to come before this body or whoever, whatever body is assembled here before we actually authorize the spending.
It also, if I may, it also?
This is a complicated proposal. The governor says we have a 2% cap on the portion of the budget that we have a 2% cap on. You're talking about that, right?
So we have two caps. We have an appropriations cap, which is spending, and then we have another 2% cap on the levy, okay? So it is, we have different caps. This is an appropriations spending cap. How much you can increase the budget over the previous year and bank it. So this is?
This is not, this is not the 2% levy cap we're talking about.
No, this is not the 2% levy cap.
And I believe a couple of years ago, Christine had given us an example of a municipality that had money for an emergency expense but couldn't spend it. It was for a recreation building, but the money was there, but because they didn't have the cap bank, they weren't able to authorize the expenditure.
Correct.
I would add, Madam.
And there was a need.
That if you get an unanticipated source of revenue, you might not be able to?
Who can't hear? You can't hear me?
If the township, for some reason, gets an unanticipated source of revenue, if you don't have the cap room under the appropriation formula, you will not be able to spend it. So that's sort of an insurance policy. You don't have to spend it, but it does, you'd be getting against yourself if you don't pass this night.
Reemphasize what we're talking about here. It doesn't mean that we can have a tax levy above 2%.
That's correct.
It's very important to understand what we're talking about. The tax levy is what people pay. We're not talking about that.
As a resident and a taxpayer, I've seen my taxes go up by 15% over the past four years. Many residents thought that there was something in a 2% cap that seems to have all sorts of loopholes, workarounds, banks, caps. And I think that any possible way that we can do to restrain ourselves from spending is a wonderful thing. I am looking at this ordinance that's being introduced, and I see significant mention of the 2014 budget, not for future budgets. And my concern is that increasing the current year 2014 budget by more, up to 3.5% does not promote the health, safety, or welfare of our citizens. Looking at a budget increase that is going to be on a tax levy, on a tax rate basis over 5% this year, and that the CFO forecasts to be close to 5.5% next year, I think any possible constraint that we can impose on ourselves is positive. And I think giving ourselves the ability to spend that much more in future years is a negative.
I'd like to add that, you know, to the manager's own admission, this is complicated. I'm a numbers guy, and I get numbers and finance, but I'm not prepared to vote to introduce this ordinance, having a very limited understanding of the specifics of it.
It has to be done before the budget's introduced. So once we introduce the budget, we're done. We can't have this.
Yeah. And what I would advise is that if there is something on the agenda that you do not feel comfortable with, that you reach out to the manager or the attorney prior to the meeting to get that comfort level. Because many times, we have to introduce the budget tonight. We don't have the flexibility in that regard. And I think that it's also very important that we also introduce this cap bank as well.
This is not approving the cap bank. This is just introducing.
Exactly.
After having a hearing scheduled on August 12 and then ultimate vote. This is just to introduce it to meet the time period. So it's not approving it.
And once the decision is made, whether it was a good or bad decision, it's done. And we will have to live with the consequences of this decision for the next three years or more.
Katie?
Does anyone have any questions regarding any of the specific ordinances?
You want me to continue? I didn't finish.
Are you going to go through all of them?
Okay, yeah, I want to go through all of them. Okay, the second item is the bond ordinance for our annual road program. We usually pave about $2.1 million in roads annually. This would cover that cost, and it will cover additional monies we'll need to supplement grants that we're receiving for certain roads, specifically Prospect Terrace, Lorraine Avenue, Manhattan Avenue, West Inglewood Avenue. I believe I got them all. But this money will also be used to supplement that as well. So this is our annual road resurfacing program. That's for ordinance 25-2014. Ordinance 26-2014, this ordinance is to deal with flooding issues that we're having on Downing Street. Every time it rains, we have serious flooding down towards the bottom of Downing Street. We have residents' properties being flooded. And we had a study done. The study recommended certain action on behalf of the township to alleviate the flooding. Also, this ordinance will allow for a study to be done on flooding at the intersection of Van Arsdale and Rensley Place, where residents are complaining that the water's coming down the street and flooding their backyards and entering their pools. So this will allow us to do a study on that issue and to put the money for corrective action in a future budget. Ordinance 27-2014, it's a bond ordinance for the renovation of the old police headquarters. It's for cabling, telephone cabling, computer cabling, and for furniture as well. So there's $315,000 for cabling and other necessities in the building and $160,000 to furnish the building. Ordinance number 28-2014 is for a townwide audible alert system. We put this in the previous year's budget after Sandy. This system will allow the township to install, I believe it's six, basically loudspeakers that are capable of announcing voice or sound. In case of emergency, we'd be able to provide direction to township residents regarding any emergency, and we'll be able to do that remotely as well. So this will cover the cost of that. Ordinance 29-2014, this ordinance allows us to acquire equipment that we need for the DPW. It's actually two five-cubic-yard dump trucks and one or two, hopefully two, loaders. We have several vehicles at the DPW that are from 1991, that were purchased in 1991. We want to be able to continue doing a good job like the DPW usually does on snow plowing. And without these vehicles, we're not sure that we're going to be able to continue the level of service that our residents are used to.
Can you just say what we're purchasing for that 480? I'm sorry. Just one?
Two.
Four.
Two?
Yeah, we have it with two five-cubic-yard dump trucks and one or two loaders.
Are these the ones that we're getting used or something?
Well, we're probably not going to be able to buy the used ones like we thought because through bonding, we're not going to be able to bond used vehicles. So we're going to have to work on that. We're going to get at least one new one. But those items will probably come back here, you know, across the desk of the council again. We might have to put those items out to bid. The dump trucks is possible. I would maybe be able to get them on state contract, but they'll be coming back across the desk of the council anyway. So they'll be, this is actually the start of the process in acquiring this equipment that we want to purchase and that we need.
Regarding the dump trucks, and I just want to make the suggestion and recommendations of my council colleagues, but we're buying trucks to put them outside so that they can rust again. And I think that we probably should entertain the idea of getting some type of storage shelter. I know it's been brought up by the public in the past, but in our tour of the DPW facility, if we're buying these really expensive trucks to put them back in the elements to rust, it's throwing good money after bad. So I think that we might want to, after we introduce these ordinances, have a conversation that if we don't get two trucks, that we get some type of temporary storage, but we got to get our equipment out of the elements.
Let me just add to that real quick. I think that it's important that we have a comprehensive discussion about the DPW in general. We have a lot of equipment that's sitting outside. The facility sits in a floodplain, so we got to be very particular about where we place any permanent shelter or temporary shelter because it could float away on us. So I think we need a comprehensive discussion.
And that's something we can discuss in our retreat.
I just want to remind that we're talking about replacing 23 old vehicles. So, you know, the elements were good for the vehicles. I mean, it's lasted. And that's it.
What we're talking about is the introduction of the ordinances, not the passing of the ordinance.
Correct.
Correct. I think because we only meet once a month, I think anytime we can have a conversation about something, we should definitely have a conversation about it.
I need a motion to introduce the ordinances. I'll make the motion. Second?
Councilmember Castle? Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Castle?
No on 24, no on 27, and no on 29, and yes on the rest.
24, 27, 29, no.
Correct.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Zon?
No on 24, no on 25, yes on 26, no on 27, yes on 28, 29.
What about 30?
Yes, on 30.
Yes.
All right, so I have 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29.
All ordinances were introduced.
Correct.
We'll now move to the introduction of the 2014 municipal budget.
I'd like to introduce the 2014 municipal budget.
It has to be read by title.
Introduce and approve the 2014 municipal budget on first reading by title and schedule August 12, 2014 at 8 o'clock PM in the municipal building council chambers as the date, time, and location of public hearing on the 2014 municipal budget. And also, I'm sorry, there's a correction that was brought to my attention. Total to be raised by taxes, the total number should have been the local tax municipal.
Jamie, you have to speak clearly and slowly. I can't hear you.
There's a correction that was brought to my attention. The total to be raised by taxes, it should be five, five, not five, three.
Total to be raised by taxes is $55,339.
$55 million.
Fifty-three million, $55,339,458.
We have a motion on the floor? And I'll make, I'll second it.
Okay, Councilmember Castle?
Yes, introduce.
Deputy Mayor Castle?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Zon? Manz?
Yes. We now will be introducing the 2014 Cedar Lane Special Improvement District budget.
Introduce and approve the 2014 Cedar Lane Special Improvement District budget on first reading by title and schedule August 12, 2014 at 8 o'clock PM in the municipal building council chambers as the date, time, and location of public hearing on side budget.
I make a motion to introduce.
I'll second that. Can I ask a question on the motion? I don't know if this is attorney or the manager. Whose responsibility is it to replace the trees or the shrubs or some of the metal things on Cedar Lane? Does it come out of this budget?
It comes out of our budget. It comes out of the township budget. It's not coming out of these items.
Why wouldn't it come out of the Cedar Lane Improvement District budget?
All of the repairs that are made to the actual street have always come out of the township budget. I really don't, I don't even know if they would have enough money in their budget to do something like that, to actually make the repairs to the street.
Well, I'm not specifically talking about the repairs. I think I'd like to see, as opposed to the orange cones, maybe shrubs, you know, like bushes, as opposed to large trees. I understand the concern about trees, you know, the purpose of having cars slow down on Cedar Lane is not just safety, but so people can actually see the stores and hopefully stop and shop. But the large trees have maybe become too mature and in some areas have prevented that action. But I think maybe a shrub in its place instead of the orange cone, because I think the orange cone may be too small, is a good compromise.
It's also the way the streetscape is designed, okay? Those sections where the trees are, they actually come out into the sidewalks, you know, pretty far. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to look at what grate we can purchase. We don't, we're trying not to purchase the same grate so that it's bad in two or three years. We're trying to get a different grate, a better grate, which may require some adjustments being made to the sidewalk. So it's pretty significant what we're.
By using the deputy mayor's suggestion of shrubs, would that decrease the time it will take to remove the cones? The cones are an eyesore, and trying to attract business and maintain business on Cedar Lane, it doesn't help to have these orange cones up and down the street. And I understand why they're there for safety.
They're there because the, some of the grates, you know, present a trip hazard and the trees are gone. We need to meet with, you know, certain constituents, sheetrood advisory board, Cedar Lane management group, and determine what tree is going to go there. Even if we put a shrub, we still have to be concerned about the area, you know, where the grate is. So I mean, that's something I could look into if it's possible to put a shrub there.
Just on?
Councilmember Zon actually had his end up first.
A big chunk of the budget that we're asking merchants to pay for, $40,000, is going to a loan repayment for the work that was done on the streetscape. I have severe concerns as a patron of many of the stores on Cedar Lane, looking at the streetscape, looking at the cones, looking at the metalwork, looking at the brick tiles around that. I've driven through Ridgewood. Ridgewood has many mature trees on its main street, on Ridgewood Avenue. I think I would be more than happy to trade those trees, to have those along Cedar Lane shading, shading those businesses in front of them. It takes some years to grow those trees and to grow mature trees, but if we put in bushes, we're not going to get what we promised. We're not going to get that shade. Those are key issues of what we promised to those business owners and what they are paying for. And I think we should be providing that to those businesses and to residents.
Let me just add one more thing to what he says. We also have no, we have nothing We also have no, we have nothing budgeted for this. We're trying to do this within the framework of our existing maintenance budget, okay? So we don't, we don't have money specifically budgeted to upgrade or add additional upgrades to Cedar Lane. So we're trying to do this within our existing budget. And one reason we haven't made a move on replacing the trees is we got to make sure we have an adopted budget and know exactly how much money we have before we actually make a move as well.
Counselor Castle and Counselor Pruitt?
I agree with Counselor Son. There are a number of towns that actually have trees along their main thoroughfare, and it looks quite nice. And I think if we start putting a tree in a bush, and then a bush and another tree, I mean, aside from the fact that we're detracting from uniformity, it's laughable, right? We had a plan that was to put trees on Cedar Lane. Now we've got cones on Cedar Lane. We put a young tree, we're going to have time to let it grow, prune it. I don't think that we should have a willy-nilly strategy about putting a donut in the car because we've got a flat tire. Let's put another tire, let's put another tree, and preserve the uniformity and what will be the beauty of Cedar Lane moving forward.
Counselor Pruitt?
I, I agree with the tree idea rather than the shrubbery idea. I'm sorry that I have to do what I think is the best thing to do here, but that's not the topic. The topic is to pass the Cedar Lane budget. And we can talk about trees or bushes at some other time, since we have to pay for it anyway. The Cedar Lane budget has some certain specific things they, they have in there, and the point is that we're going to pass their budget. And we ought to answer that question and not get caught up in the shrubbery or trees.
So on the budget, so on the budget, first of all, I'm not, I'm not in favor of trees over shrubs either. I just, I'm not in favor of the cones, but...
Unless it's a cone.
Unless it's a cone, that's right. But on the budget, the question is, I mean, the Cedar Lane Improvement District has paid in the past for the improvements. Why is the Cedar Lane Improvement District not paying in the future or current for the improvements? And that's the question. I understand what was done in, in the middle, but as Counselor Son clearly pointed out, the Cedar Lane Improvement District is paying for the past improvements. Why aren't they paying for the current and future? And that's something I think that should, we should get a, maybe a ruling on, like what was decided.
Mrs. Mayor, I just want to add my two sentences. I don't want to choose cones, cone shrubs or trees. I think the Cedar Lane merchants should choose that. And I mean, I don't think, I can't sit here and say what looks good, what doesn't look good. Maybe green cones are good, but let's let these Cedar Lane merchants weigh in on that. I believe we have that advisory board, and, you know, our job is to pass their budget but not decide as a true, you have to prune now, prune it or anything like that.
So getting, getting back to the matter at hand, was there a motion and a second to introduce the budget? Yes, real call.
Counselor Castle?
Yes, introduction.
Deputy Mary Cass?
Yes.
Counselor Pruitt?
Yes.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Son?
Yes.
We are now at the Good and Welfare portion of the meeting, but I'm going to ask for an agenda motion, just so we don't have to reopen the meeting again. Council listed item number 10, Budget Subcommittee. At the reorganization meeting, I recommended that three council members make up a subcommittee. There's a proposed resolution on the agenda, and I want to know if there's any objections to it so that we can add it to the consent agenda and residents can speak to it at Good and Welfare.
Yes, I have a few objections. In the interest of maintaining a fair, balanced, and transparent type of government, I, I take issue with any one particular council person making a recommendation of three other council people to be on a subcommittee. Since we need four votes to get something done, you know, Madam Mayor, if you had said, "I volunteer myself to be on a subcommittee," I wouldn't have an issue with that, but to name three other council people, it kind of gives the perception that you might be the fourth vote. I, I also take issue with the particular subcommittee because I'm a newly elected council person. I sat in that chair when Deputy Mayor Katz said that he would like to work with the newly elected council members on the budget. I'd like to volunteer myself to be a member of that subcommittee. But if the responsibility is being handed to the new council, and we receive a letter that says we are going to be financially liable if actions aren't taken, as a member of the new council, I would like the opportunity to at least deliberate with other council colleagues on that budget and not have two-thirds of the budget be dominated by individuals from the past council that didn't actually pass or introduce a budget. So those are, those are some of the objections, the objections that I have, but I volunteer to be on the subcommittee. I just, responsibility has already been advocated to the new council, and I, I feel like we should at least be given an opportunity as new council members to bring forth some of the ideas that we, not only that we campaigned on, but some of the ideas that we've spoken to all of you about and not have to worry about quorums or, you know, violating OMA or so on and so forth. So that's my objection.
Are there any other objections?
I understand that the budget is voted by seven people, and unless there's an objection tonight of the three people who are currently assigned that particular responsibility, I think we should move forward. It's, it's a complicated situation, but I think the reason why the appointments were made that first night was because we are in a rather difficult position here budgetarily, and I think we have three people who have the interest in the town at heart, but they cannot make anything happen without the other five people, the four, four other people endorsing their proposal.
Absolutely, and I couldn't disagree with you more, and we've already had conversations about this. Just tonight, one of the members that I recommended for the Budget Subcommittee made a decision that I do not agree with, so to insinuate that I'm trying to appoint a subcommittee so that...
No, that wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't to insinuate.
That's what was stated.
No, no, I said...
You said that you wanted to be transparent.
Absolutely.
That, and their transparency will be the only way in which I govern. So to insinuate that I was appointing three members so that I would be the fourth vote, I take offense to that.
It wasn't meant to be offensive, Madam Mayor.
But that's the way that it's taken.
When you have two-thirds of a, of a subcommittee from a previous council that couldn't pass a budget, couldn't introduce a budget, I think it defies the laws of common sense that you would have a majority of a subcommittee.
So now you're questioning my common sense as well.
No, I'm not. I'm simply saying that you have an opportunity to put fresh eyes on a budget. Your own deputy mayor, our deputy mayor, made that recommendation.
If I, Madam Mayor, listen, I don't agree, Counselor Castle, with what you said about the mayor. I think that maybe you didn't mean what you said, but it, but it certainly didn't come out proper. There's nothing to preclude you from sitting down and meeting with myself and Alan, I'm sorry, Counselor Son or myself and Counselor Pruitt after, you know, it's, it's a...
Or during, or at a meeting.
It can be during because we can't have four, but it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's not an official action as far as what we take. We're just trying to do some of the heavy lifting, meet with as many people as we can to try to get as much information as we can to bring it back to the council and then make the proper decision. But we're not making the decisions, we're just presenting the council. And you know what? We can present them with A, B, and C, and you can decide you want to go with D, E, and F instead.
No, I understand that. These are, I mean, these are the conversations and discussions that should have been had months ago. What I'm saying is that there's an opportunity to get, you know, to your own admission, to fresh minds on a subcommittee to make recommendations, and we are actually not taking advantage of that opportunity.
I'll tell you this now, I'm absolutely willing to sit down and meet with you again after the subcommittee and show you all the notes, and if you want to invite one of the other two members, I have no problem. I want to present the best information to the council so we can make the best decision on the budget for the residents of Teneque. So it doesn't, it shouldn't take you out of it. Be part of it, just be part of it in a different dynamic.
Exactly. And since there clearly doesn't seem to be support for what you're recommending, my question is, is there any objections to move forward with putting the Budget Subcommittee on the consent agenda so that the public can speak on it?
Madam Mayor, I suggest we move that as an administrative motion to the official record, adding it to the agenda.
So I make that motion.
I need a second and a...
Counselor Castle?
Absolutely not.
Deputy Mary Cass?
Yeah.
Counselor Schwartz?
Yes.
Counselor Son?
Yes.
Yes.
That will be, that'll be, said, resolution K.
Does it need to be read into the record?
Yes.
Could you read it into the record, Madam Clerk?
A resolution confirming and ratifying the establishment of a Budget Subcommittee of the council and the members thereof, whereas the council must introduce the 2014 municipal budget by July 15, 2014, and whereas by reason of the delay in introducing said 2014 municipal budget, the council must be prepared to discuss and vote on any amendments to said budget immediately following the public hearing thereon, scheduled for August 12, 2014. And whereas in order to prepare recommendations for amendments to said budget in time for the August 12, 2014 public hearing thereon, the Township Council desires to establish a Budget Subcommittee of the council. And whereas the mayor proposed such a committee at the reorganizational meeting of the Township Council on July 1, 2014, and suggested the appointment of council members Henry Pruitt and Alan Son, along with Deputy Mayor Katz, to such committee to meet with the manager and report to the council at the July 15, 2014 meeting with any recommended changes or amendments. And whereas Rule 8, Subsection B of Council Rules of Procedure as set forth in Appendix 1 of Chapter 2 of the Code of the Township of Teneque provides that special committees of the council for legislative purposes may be appointed by the council pursuant to resolution. Now therefore, be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Teneque, Bergen County, New Jersey, that's a Township Council, hereby ratifies and confirms the establishment, the establishment of a Budget Subcommittee of the council consisting of council members Pruitt and Son and Deputy Mayor Katz. The NBA further resolves that the Budget Subcommittee shall be charged with the duty of reviewing the proposed 2014 municipal budget with the manager and preparing and recommending any changes or amendments thereto and report seeing to council at the July 15, 2014 meeting.
Thank you. I would like to now open up the meeting for Good and Welfare. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any issue. If this is your first meeting, you will have an opportunity to address the council. You can speak for five minutes, and after everyone has spoken and Good and Welfare is closed, council will then respond to your, your concerns. Jane?
The Senior Citizen Advisory Board urges you, the town council, to approve the allocation of funds to purchase a township-wide audible alert communication system, not reliant on electricity. Several neighboring communities, Leonia and Anglo-Rocclis, for example, have already installed this system. Sirens and loudspeakers are mounted on poles. During an emergency, alarms and voice messages can be broadcast. This system has battery and solar power backup. This system should be an integral part of any emergency preparedness program. If Teneque can spend millions of dollars on a new soccer field, it can also fund an emergency communication system that protects the health and safety of all its citizens. Again, we urge you to approve the purchase of this emergency communication system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Welcome to your official position as mayor, deputy mayor, council member Castle, council member Son, balance of our council. As a resident, taxpayer, and citizen, I, I want to comment first on this new resolution. Having lived here for more than a quarter of a century, pay taxes every year, the situation we find Teneque in now did not drop out of the sky. It happened on the watch of some of you. But I'm going to get specific about this, okay? The people that we have to say about late budget or complicated budget, your budget is no tougher than the other 555 towns in New Jersey. I don't know why things have gotten so bad here in Teneque. It concerns me, and I do want new blood on the council. Mayor, as far as the resolution that was just posted, I would feel a lot better if the subcommittee was made up of three members of the council, since four members of the council constitutes a majority. So the three non-members of the subcommittee are essentially closed out. They can't change anything. This is regrettable. I suggest make it three.
It is three.
It is three.
And, and, no, and the mayor, that's four.
No, I'm not a member of the subcommittee.
You're not a member?
No.
Whoa, okay, I have to take that back. Oh, can I have my, come back?
I like that. We finally got to take that back.
All right. It is three, good. Okay. Now, the manager mentioned that nothing has been budgeted for the repair, not the improvement, the repair of the botched streetscape, okay? It was bad on day one, and that was seven years ago. There's a saying that General Colin Powell said, "If you break it, you own it." The, the town did not do the streetscape well. It reeks of low quality, it reeks of disrespect to the citizens, it reeks of wasting of money, our tax money. And wherever you find it, the fact that in seven years, no one has said we must have a budget to repair, repair, not approve, what we did to the streetscape is scary. If you have a flat tire, as the council member said, you don't stay fixing the, the flat tire, it's an optional addition. You have to fix it, of course, you broke it. You broke it because there was some dysfunction within the way things were specified and which, when what properties were accepted. You don't have dissolving sidewalk as we do if a quality job was done. And who paid? The council people of Teneque? And who wrote the check? The Township of Teneque. You have to, you own it, you have to make it right. That's your responsibility. Otherwise, you consulted us in the neighborhood of Cedar Lane. I'm sorry, I miscounted on those four. I thought it was three, and I thought that was a discussion. And then, oh, examples, I thank the deputy mayor for mentioning what he did about the trees and the shrubs. Light pollution, the lights we picked, the town picked, are, half the light goes into the sky. It's light pollution. It's not good for the environment and wastes our money. The trees, seven-year-old trees, are my height. You've seen them. Who's responsible? The council, the township is responsible, and the township has to find the funds within its budget to make it right for Cedar Lane, for that part of this town. And to vow never to allow the process of government to get to be so lax that such poor quality is purchased in the, in the name of improvement. I'm very sorry, I've lived with this seven years. I reported this six months after the...
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
The streetscape was complete.
Mr. Rose? He'll be next. He'll be next, sir, just after the next speaker.
Janet Stanley. Howard Rose, resident of Teneque. Just going to back up onto this budget that you just passed for the Cedar Lane Improvement District. As is budgeted... As is budgeted, improved landscaping, fifteen
We introduced it.
No, I understand that, we introduced it. If I use the wrong term, I apologize. The improved landscaping of $15,000 is the only thing that that organization is responsible for in terms of ongoing processes along Cedar Lane. I know this because I was a former chairperson for the Cedar Lane Improvement District, and I know all about the streetscape, its problems, ensuing problems, continuing problems, unresolved problems, things that shouldn't be at this point, still problematic are. And that's where the misfortune really lies. It's ongoing, it's never been ameliorated, you know, the kid with his thumb in the dyke, if you don't repair it soon, it's a big flood. And we have a flood here. Regarding the Cedar Lane Streetscape, I've commented on that a month ago by email, and you've gotten some information back regarding it. I'm very concerned as both a resident and as a merchant on Cedar Lane. I think cones, hazard, junky concrete, and then I think again, cones, hazard. As I mentioned, Cedar Lane is the face of Teaneck. Go back to cones, hazard, injuries, problems, Cedar Lane is the face of Teaneck. I've got a very graphic representation here for you of Cedar Lane is the face of Teaneck. I hope you can stand it. Cedar Lane is the face of Teaneck. And it's a problem. Cedar Lane is the face of Teaneck with all its problems.
Mr. Rose, could you please address the council?
I'm addressing the council, but it's unfair if the presentation isn't also shown to the audience here. They deserve the same amount of information the council gets at a meeting. So I'm real concerned when we find out that, A, it's not being ameliorated, B, there's no game plan, and then it's deferred, as is everything else deferred, even with the resolution of, we have a date in mind, we've checked out a couple of things, we know we have a couple of concepts to research, but we can't give any more information than it's on our calendar, it's on the agenda, it needs to be more so than that. Budget. I, I'm concerned that, in terms of Cedar Lane's budget, that all you have is the authority, really, to pass it or not pass it. You don't tell them how to spend their money. They give you a projection of how they're going to spend their money. And for years, it was problematic with overpayment in terms of salaries and not in terms of goods and services. When it first started, it was mainly a volunteer group of people who could get things done. At this point in time, there's still some volunteers that came under the thumb of the council in the middle of its life, and it hasn't been the same since. It's grown in terms of scope and cost to the people who pay the taxes, the property owners, and that's a real problem. Are they getting goods and services that they pay for and that they continue paying for at $40,000 a year? I don't have the exact answer on that, I'm not that in touch with them, but you know what? I think you're all less in touch with them than I am. And that's a problem, because you're making decisions. It should be reevaluated, considered. What is the goal of that group? Is it achieving it under the auspices of how it's done right now? Give it some thought, make it better. That's all I look for this council to do, make things better. It's gone on too long. I'd like to give this to council through the clerk, because I think it's an important document that you should have on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Gentlemen in the back?
Mrs. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Mr. Manager, Honorable Member of the Council of Teaneck, I'm very delighted to be here with you. My name is Martin Mukong Eibong. I'm coming from Africa, from Cameroon, particularly Cameroon in the Central African region, next neighbor to Nigeria, who is in West Africa. Before leaving Cameroon to be here, I was a man of council of my native town, Bahia, center region in Cameroon. So I've decided I'm here in Teaneck at 48 North, Prospect Terrace, Teaneck, New Jersey. I've just, since two years, I've decided to come and attend the council meeting to see how things are moving here, and I'm very, very happy to be here among few people. I see this opportunity to extend my warm congratulations to Mrs. Mayor, who has just recently been appointed, and I want to say that I would really, would like to, 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 to explain how things are moving, moving in our, in our municipalities in Africa, how things are, how the meeting are, are, are going. My English is not very good, but I'm struggling to express myself. So I'm very happy to be here, I'm very impressed by how debates are going. I have some CDs from our meetings in, in my native town council, so next time I hope I will seize an opportunity to explain how things are moving in my, my city town. Congratulations to everybody, because for me, it's very important to know how things are, are moving here. I'm a citizen of the Township of Teaneck. I'm proud to be here, and I wish to your team success in all your endeavors, and to the councilman, Mr. Jason Castle, I've been following you, it's good to criticize if it's necessary, on the way to improve things at the level of the council. Thank you for giving me such an opportunity to be among you, and I'm very proud once again to be in Teaneck.
Thank you, and welcome to Town Council Meeting.
Thank you.
Dr. Powers?
Chuck Powers, Teaneck. One thing we have to be excited about is the fact that the new council is led by a mayor who has been pressing hard for transparency, insisting that the minutes get done, that the minutes, not only of this council, but also of the, of the several boards who, that who we've promised would have their minutes and their agendas up, and that you have pressed also for workshops in the past, and that's important. And therefore, I assume that you'll be happy to know that, in fact, I actually have now developed a, a website called teanetransparency.com that is actually going to provide additional information beyond that which is on the website. And one of the things it already provides is a letter, which I think you folks need to talk to the people about tonight. You've already just introduced a budget, which for a period of six months, this, your prior council never did, and you did it tonight without saying a word about what you were doing. I think it's really important that you explain to us what it is, because this piece of paper came from the state and threatened that if, in fact, you didn't by the 23rd of this month introduce a budget, you would all be paying $25 a day for not having done it until you did. I have a suggestion about how to make transparent the process that led to the earlier discussion about the Subcommittee, because it is in fact the case that Mr. Katz on May 20 says, "I will not, not support a special meeting, and I will not vote for a new budget until I have the input of the two new councilmembers." That's a direct quote. The input of those councilmembers needs to be part of what it is that the public gets to hear. And the way to achieve that, Mayor and Council, is to have special meetings at which the actual budget that you just introduced tonight, and which you can in fact amend before you approve it, is in fact understood by the, by the people of this township, because it sounds to us as if it's pretty clear, it's going to go up one heck of a lot, and we need to understand why it is and how it is that you are deciding to make those decisions. It's important that you tell us what you're doing, and you're not doing that. Even the meeting, this meeting did not actually get, as you have insisted, Mayor Parker, in the past, on getting the agenda up by Thursday night. It did not go up until after close of business on Friday. Your agenda and consent agenda never got to the public on the website until after your meeting on July 1st. I'd like to know from each of you when each of you actually saw the consent agenda and the 30 pages of it, because I am heard by rumor that in fact some of you never even saw it until you sat down at that meeting. And you passed something very complicated that night. You passed a resolution for a new, for the, to have an attorney appointed in a town whose code says you must have two years, you must appoint that person for two years, and you appointed that person for one. I actually know the reason, there's a conflict of laws. The Code of the Township of Teaneck says two years, and the state law says you can't, you can't give him a professional services contract without a bidding process for more than one. I know exactly what happens, and you should ask him, and you should have asked him on July 1, why he is proposing a one-year, a one-year contract in a situation where the code says only two years. And you would have been asked that question if some of us who actually understand what goes on in this council had raised those questions for you in the Good and Welfare section of July 1. And the reason that didn't happen is none of us could see what it was. Did you know what was there? I couldn't know before that meeting. And I think it's unacceptable that this township does not tell its citizens and seek every possible opportunity with special meetings, workshops, make it open, folks. You are in trouble, your state is chasing you. I'm going to leave this up for the public to see. I hope they go to Teaneck Transparency and see this document, and the predecessor wants to it. This township is in trouble with the state, you are individually in trouble with the state. We need your attention, you need our attention to what it is you're doing in order to make this township function better and as transparently as you have always said, Mayor, that you want to be. Thank you.
Is that Leslie? I can't see. Leslie.
Thank you, I'm Leslie McKeon, Teaneck resident. I'm sorry that the two new councilmen that I so strongly supported have their baptism by both fire and flood tonight. But here we are, and I want to pick up essentially where Mr. Powers left off. I have a copy of the letter from Thomas Neff, who is the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for the State of New Jersey, which was sent to Teaneck. And it is embarrassing, but I think it should be part of the record. And so I am going to do a mixture of reading it and summarizing it, because I think I will run out of time if I try to read it through. It's addressed to the manager and to the members of the governing body, which is this council. Though by rights, it should really go to the prior council. Our records indicate that you have not yet introduced a calendar year 2014 budget, despite more than four months since the statutory deadline and three months since a relapsed deadline to do so. Your governing body is only one of approximately 15 of several hundred Jersey communities that are in this position, and this is why you are receiving a copy of this letter, which is being sent to all similarly situated governing body members. The avoidable consequences of your financial situation and to your constituents are substantial. The letter gives four bullet points, and I'll read each of the bullets, and I'm going to kind of short summary the following information in each of those four bullets. Damage to your financial reputation amongst those who rate and buy short and long-term Can result in higher than necessary interest rates and taxpayer funds needlessly being wasted. They cite the example of one municipality paying interest for short-term debt at a rate that was approximately five times what is paid in other communities. A needless issuance of estimated tax bills, so that you have an estimated payment followed by a corrected, updated payment, which incurs demands on staff and related costs that could be avoided. Reducing your options to achieve a balanced budget. The later your budget is adopted, and we're halfway through the year, the less time you will have to advance necessary resolutions, actions, debt restructurings, or other actions that could serve as alternatives to simply raising taxes as a means of balancing your budget. And the fourth bullet, lessening your constituents and taxpayers' ability to meaningfully participate in the budget process. This not only robs your constituents of the opportunity to participate in self-governance and may result in your not obtaining the benefit of good ideas that would otherwise come to your attention. For these reasons, you are hereby directed to introduce your budget no later than Wednesday, July 23, 2014, and the state holds out a threat to the manager and the council that you will be fined individually $25 a day to be paid for as individuals and not by the municipal budget. I think this is shameful. You have my apologies, our two new councilmembers, because this really should not have come on to this council. This is really the responsibility of the prior council, which the four of you have been on, and which I think this is something we should learn from and never allowed to happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Naomi Coleman?
Naomi Kramer, Teaneck. Congratulations to all the new
I apologize, I was thinking of Naomi Coleman. Kramer. Sorry, I didn't hear.
A couple of things. I was surprised to read an ordinance to be introduced by Lizette Parker, changing wording concerning council meetings. I'm assuming, hopefully, wrongfully, that this ordinance written, as written, will not take the place of holding a separate workshop meeting at least once a month. You have that council thing. This ordinance does nothing to do what a workshop is supposed to be about, deliberating and discussing things before they are voted on with the hope of helping members influence each other on important issues. Yes, you don't vote at workshop meetings, but prepare ordinance as resolutions to be presented at an open meeting. It is really important for the public to hear your deliberations and understand the wise of issues presented. I'm not sure why some of you have made such a big issue of not voting at workshop meetings. That is not its purpose. So I'm hoping that we will still see the possibility of at least one workshop meeting a month, considering that at least four of you have expressed the desire to have them. Another issue is that I have not seen the new contract for the Township Attorney. It was not available when you made the appointment. I hope it's not the same as the old contract, which is much more lucrative than most other Township Attorney contracts in this area. And I hope that it does not portend another 1 million-plus year for our Township Attorney fees for a very part-time job. That was the fees that I think he received over at least last year, and if not as much, almost as much in previous years. And I also don't understand the process of the choice and making of an appointment to a committee. I'm not sure why the mayor alone made those suggestions. I'm not sure why the mayor alone made those suggestions without discussing it with the entire council and getting volunteers. So I'm not sure how that it all happened, but it sounds like process is a problem here since this was not an open discussion. Thank you.
Nikki Shalane, Teeneck resident. First, I'd like to congratulate everybody on the council, new council. It's a pleasure to be here. I wasn't going to say anything, but I read in the paper about a week or two ago that the Teeneck Conservatory, which is part of the Puffin Foundation, is being damaged constantly. Fires are being lit there. The labyrinth has been knocked over. For people that don't know about it, that used to be a big dump, and people used to throw their garbage there, and it was really horrible. And the people that run the Puffin Foundation took it upon themselves to spend money to clean it up and make a beautiful park out of it. And to hear that there are a group of hoodlums that meet there at night and set fires and damage that place really bothers me. The people from the Puffin Foundation has put so much money into this town, and we are so thankful that we have it, besides all the shows and the grants and everything they do for us. I don't think it would be difficult if we had a police patrol going by there and making sure that there aren't people that are in that park late at night smoking marijuana, which is not legal in this town anyway, and to make sure that they don't continue to damage that park. I mean, the birds, the statues, everything there is such a beautiful thing and so special to us. Why can't we set up a special patrol, I mean, to go around and make sure that these kids are not damaging that park? Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Mr. Abbott. Can I have a show of hands of how many additional people would like to speak? Nice new look. I like it.
Who's the new guy? I like that. I could at least escape this in front of the camera. But I'm Tom Abbott from Teeneck. Couple of things I'd like to first ask about. There was a piece of property that the township had decided to buy next to the burial ground. I believe there was a bond issue related to it, which I thought had not passed, and doesn't seem to be a bond issue now. It may have already passed. I may have missed it. Can be confusing. But beyond whether, if it hasn't, whether it is coming up, the other question is why isn't the Open Space Fund being used for that? That was one issue. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the workshop meetings and the discontinuance of them. And the idea at the time was supposedly there would be just as many meetings. However, instead of having two different formats, there would be a single format that would all be the same, and you'd have plenty of time for discussion. What actually has happened over time is the number of meetings have been reduced possibly to the number of regular meetings there used to be. So it wasn't that the workshop meetings were changed, they're just eliminated. I checked quickly at the library before I came over where there are videos for 2010. For the second half of the year, where you've now scheduled a total of eight meetings starting today, there are 12 council meeting videos from 2010. In total, I believe there are 32 compared to the 25 meetings that were scheduled this year, including the reorganization meeting and the four budget meetings. And this is just counting the videos there. I believe at least two meetings didn't show up on videos, though I could be wrong about that. Part of this also leads to the question of subcommittees. Subcommittees are a good thing, but not if they're used to keep discussions private. The mention of, even if there's a subcommittee of three, Councilman Castle could now discuss separately with some of the committee members, that sort of defeats the whole idea. You've added a fourth person, but you're keeping it legal by keeping it as separate meetings. The way a subcommittee should work is a subcommittee should reconsider things, study it, and report back to the council for full discussions. It shouldn't be simply what it's recommending, but it should be what it's recommending, why it recommends it, what recommendations have been decided against. I see Henry is nodding his head because he was on the school board, and essentially that's how they did it. A subcommittee was not used to avoid discussing in public. And I don't mean to imply that's the purpose of this particular subcommittee, but over the last six to eight years, discussions have more and more left the public realm and been done sort of in back rooms. There haven't been time at regular meetings because you have the presentations, you have good and welfare up to an hour. If you're going to break by 11, and you've got business conduct, there just isn't time for significant discussion. The workshop could be two or three hours. Good and welfare was limited to 15 minutes, and there was only discussion of whatever issues the council chose to talk about. Anyway, I had one more thing, but I've forgotten. Anyway, thank you.
Dr. Ashin, Teeneck. A number of issues, but I'll start with ordinance 24-2014. There was a lot of arguments that we have to have the cap bank because it might happen that we have money and cannot spend it. I suggest that maybe you should take an ordinance which would state that if we have money we cannot spend, we return it to taxpayers because we robbed them of this money. It was not necessary to spend. That's one thing. Second thing is about the other ordinances. Okay, the thing is that many of these ordinances are about doing work. What I learned and checked with specialists, that according to the New Jersey building codes, okay, we cannot reject any bit, low bit, if it uses even the lowest allowed quality of materials. But if it's on township's land, then we can first make an ordinance, what is the level acceptable of quality of materials acceptable to us, and then tell any bidder that they should comply, otherwise we won't do anything. Therefore, we cannot do any of this work before we get such ordinance approved and with specialists and guarantee that our sidewalks do not fall apart, that other things do not need well repair in short time, and so on and so forth. Therefore, it's absolutely just unreasonable to put them on the budget for this year. This year would come probably to investigating what we need, finding out, checking the ordinances, well, investigate what we should do, how much money we'll need for that and all that. It's all not done. It's, okay, give us money, we'll decide what to do. Wrong. Please, all these ordinances should not be approved. And related to that, the manager acts as if all money will be available, and therefore go ahead with police building because, okay, so it was, well, approved, $3.5 million for the whole thing with architect, with building and all the stuff. Oh, we found we didn't put $400,000 extra. Okay, now, okay, let's go and finish it. We don't need it, okay? No approval for that, which is possible, and therefore you should, according to all the rules, the council can do it, anybody on behalf of the engineer can do it, tell the contractor to suspend any work till the problem with funding is resolved. Furthermore, the township has right at any time to ask for change of the plans and on what job is going to done. In negotiations with contractor, more money, less money, and what to do. It should be done because it's done irresponsibly right now, okay? And money is spent, and this is the manager's attitude. It's a done deal, okay? And, well, it's not my invention, okay? I cannot disclose, well, who said that, but somebody told me that this generator sitting in an inappropriate place looks like this. Okay? So I'm sorry, I'm not American-born, so I could not invent that.
I think it's very offensive.
Okay, now, excuse me?
I think it's very offensive.
Listen, I was told, and freedom of speech, I can tell it, I did not offend anybody in particular. Okay? So, all right, so that's about the ordinances. Okay, now, one more thing. So one more thing is this business about the workshops and the formal announcement. It's very little different from what is already in the rules for the council. Bad things there are, that, again, it says that five minutes per speaker during the whole session, okay? And the chair can interrupt him at any time because he is repeating himself, running off, or something like that. It's violation of freedom of speech, and you can be sued for that. So don't do that. Second thing is, we need that every question is answered, and if you think you cannot, you should ask lawyer, and he'll tell you whether it's proper or not proper. Otherwise, just again, the freeholders at meetings, you can ask any questions you want. It's not against the law, okay? You just don't want it. It's not transparent. Transparency and democracy are very close, and what it looks like right now is authoritarian rule.
Thank you, Dr. Ashin.
Good evening. Sorry it's so late. Maybe I'm the caboose. Welcome, I want to welcome and give everybody good luck on the next upcoming year. One correction, before, it's really not soccer fields as much as I am a soccer person. At a sportsplex, there is a soccer field, football field, and there's a passive walking path of a third of a mile that's been fixed, so it's really for everybody's use. I'm here, although we can't see it, representing three different advisory boards that have had meetings and a personal comment. First and foremost, with the environmental advisory board representing Voughtee Park, we are close to finalizing the release or the mailing to the state of New Jersey, the remedial action outcome plan that once approved by the Department of Environmental Protection, and then Green Acres will then release funding to pay for some of the costs with the township. Hopefully, next month, I'll have a smile on my face. I heard from Mr. Sorge that he has been in contact with Mr. Halls, along with his associate, the project manager, and they have not heard back from him within the last month with the information that they have requested. I apologize publicly to Mr. Browden, but because of my other job, I was not able to contact him and discuss this, but I will. But it's important for us to understand that what is the RAO is essentially on Mr. Sorge's desk for submission, but there is pieces of the puzzle that are still missing that we need to provide to him, as well as some improvement of Voughtee Park that needs to be documented for the state to approve, release of the funding, the particular areas being the parking lots by TBO and putting some more dirt around where the X batting cages were to make the cap. With respect to the PPRAB, the Parks Playground Recreation Advisory Board meeting from last night, we wish to reemphasize our March 2014 notice that we very much believe that a person needs to be present at the Voughtee Sportsplex in the evening and on weekends to ensure proper maintenance and usage of the fields. We initially talked about throwing good money after bad, irrespective of the amount or what the beliefs are. It's a $3 million project, and it can easily be ruined within one or two days of people not responding or respecting the rules of usage. And to do an honor system is nice, but we may also have other issues, and we really need to deal with it, particularly when starting in the fall, we will have approximately 1,200 children with their families playing football and soccer on Friday nights, Saturdays, and Sundays. And generally speaking, it's not between the hours of nine and five. Also, in the PPRAB, we strongly recommend that we start, as Mr. Browden has mentioned many times and council members have mentioned, looking for permanent bathrooms. I think it's time for us to get away from the porta-potties, particularly since so many mothers will be there. And as I have mentioned many times, I know my wife's feeling, porta-potties can't be mentioned in public, but I certainly think that it's time for us to get a personal or a permanent area to evaluate and get started on that. That brings us to the third advisory board, which is the Municipal Open Space and Trust Fund Advisory Board. We have not had a meeting this year because of the issues of financing and budget, and now that a budget has been introduced, hopefully we'll be able to get the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund funding and expenditures and know exactly where we are, and we would strongly recommend that as we move forward. We are very anxious as an advisory board to meet in order to get that done. On a personal level, I want to thank the council, new and old, for all of their support for all of our advisory boards, and me particularly. And as a personal remark, I think that it's time that we really strongly and aggressively look for an in-house professional engineer. I think a lot of our projects are being held up because of that. I am sure it's already started. I am not aware of the inner workings. I know it's probably one of the things that Mr. Browden's front burners, but it's clear from dealing with the EAVRVP especially, that not having a PE has really hindered us in being able to get the funding we so richly deserve, which is $750,000. $625,000, which is a grant, does not need to be paid back. I thank you again very much, and once again, good luck in the upcoming year.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Anyone else wish to address the council? Good and welfare is now closed. I'll begin with Jane Irwin's comments. Is she still here? I don't believe so, but the township, I mean, the council introduced an ordinance tonight to purchase an audible alert system. So hopefully, we'll have continued support with that so that we'll have that emergency response mechanism in place. Art Vatsky, we corrected you with the three subcommittees. Thank you for your well wishes. The Cedar Lane streetscape has been an issue for you since I've gotten on the council. It predates me, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to work with the manager to relieve at least this current problem that we're having right now with these cones and have Cedar Lane beautified. Someone said today that Cedar Lane is the face of Teeneck. I sort of disagree. I believe Teeneck Road is the face of Teeneck. But I do agree that it is important and agree that we need to remove the orange cones from the street. I think I've addressed, Howard, did I address your concerns? I believe so, as a combination with Mr. Vatsky, Dr. Powers, and Ms. McKeon. I appreciate you coming in today and reminding us of our deficiency into introducing a budget. However, as a new council, we can't really focus on what didn't happen. We have to focus on what we have to do now moving forward. And that is why I proposed the budget subcommittee on July 1st so that we could just do that. What I would like for this council to do moving forward is put mechanisms in place so that we do not have to revisit this again, and we are not that delinquent in our budget. But I think it does this council a disservice to continue to lament on what we didn't do because two of those members are no longer here anymore. All we can do is focus on the future. And Dr. Powers, thank you for reminding me of the fact that I do work hard to fight for transparency, and will continue to do so. And we'll visit your website to see if there's anything that we can use on our township website. I apologize for the agenda issues. It was a concern for me, as well as many of my colleagues, to have not received an agenda until 4 o'clock before a reorganization meeting was totally unacceptable, and I do not plan for that to happen moving forward. It is important for not only us to have the information that we need-- It is important for not only us to have the information that we need for the meeting, it's also important that the public is prepared and knows what's gonna be on the agenda so that they are prepared when they come in. So, I believe that you'll have unanimous support on this council, that we take very seriously our agenda process, and as I indicated to the clerk earlier this week, if it has to be done by ordinance so that it's done within accordance with our township code, then that's what will have to happen, but we have to have our agendas timely. Mrs. Kramer, the ordinance that you see presented is just a draft ordinance. I discussed with the attorneys ways that we could improve the functionality of our council meetings that have nothing to do with workshop meetings. Many times, it's already 10 o'clock, and there's lots of items on the agenda that we needed to discuss earlier on in the meeting. For example, the township manager's report, the township attorney's report, council-listed items. Items that should be talked about at eight o'clock so that the public is here and can speak to it at Good and Welfare. So, my goal was to try to restructure the meeting so that the items that require more discussion are moved to the front of the agenda and not to the back of the agenda. It has nothing to do with adding another workshop session, that's a totally different item altogether. Mickey Shalane, you came and spoke about the Teaneck Creek Conservancy. I believe that there was a task force assembled. I'm not sure if anyone from the township was involved with that, but they did reach out to me about getting a board member, and I did recommend Mr. Castle. I'm not sure if they reached out to you from Teaneck Creek Conservancy, but they will be reaching out to you. But they have assembled a task force with a member of Thomas Jefferson Middle School to address some of those issues.
I'd just like to add that the police department does have a directed patrol for the conservancy, and they also recently have made some arrests for some inappropriate behavior in that area as well.
Mr. Abbott, you mentioned the piece of property next to the burial ground, and I actually would like an update on that. I don't know where we're at in that process.
The contracts have been signed, the necessary title searches have been ordered, the survey in order to be approved by the state for the grants that I think are potentially available have been ordered, and we're in the process of gathering all the necessary data to have a closing, as well as to get the grant money that I think the manager has applied for. I don't think there's any bonding involved with this particular purchase, to my knowledge.
Is it something that we can use open space trust fund money for?
Definitely, if you have the money, you definitely can use it.
Yeah, we were planning, we've contacted the state, there was a grant probably a year or so ago that the township had a planning, I believe it was a planning incentive grant, and we weren't able to take advantage of that grant. So, we made a phone call, and it's possible that we may still be able to utilize that grant, but we need an appraisal. So, once the appraisal is done of the property, we can apply for that grant.
And lastly, Dr. Hoffman, I'd like to thank you for your service on your three boards. I strongly agree with you that we need bathrooms by the fields, and we'll support that efforts as it comes before us. As far as the in-house professional engineer, the proposals were circulated to the new council members, and we will be discussing them under contract negotiations, and hopefully, there'll be a resolution soon. And that's all I have. Does any other council members have any comments? We'll start on this end.
So, let me take a step back for a second, because we kinda, Good and Welfare, as a governing body, we're not gonna always agree. I wanna apologize if you took offense as if I were attacking you or your proposal. I didn't agree with it, but that doesn't mean that I was launching a full frontal assault, as we say in Marine Corps. So, just because we don't always agree, I want people to understand that we're not insulting one another. I wanna let you know I was not trying to insult you, so I apologize if you took it that way.
Apology accepted.
Thank you. Our job on this budget is obviously, you know, the train's left the station, it's now our responsibility, but I fundamentally believe that we are not dedicating enough time to do the public's work. I think that we have 28 days to come to consensus on a budget, or at least get a majority to pass a budget, and I think that the public should be part of that conversation. So, if we don't, we have a subcommittee, but if we don't have meetings for the public and get their input, I think that it's really a disservice to them. Mr. Rose, I agree, we need to remove the orange cones. I think that we have a number of main thoroughfares in Teaneck, along with the mayor. I don't necessarily agree that Cedar Lane may be our face, I think we actually have a couple.
Do you agree with that?
Understood, understood. I'd like to welcome the gentleman to Teaneck, bienvenue. Mr. Powers launched a question, when did we receive the agenda? The mayor answered it about four o'clock for the reorganization meeting. I'm sorry if I'm being redundant, but I just wanna make sure I get everything. I wanna thank Ms. McKeon for reading off the NEF letter. You know, the train has left the station, but $25 a day was something that I was somewhat taken aback by, having inherited this. Ms. Kramer, I agree that we need workshop meetings. I would, you know, I'd like for my council colleagues to consider adding an additional session each month so that we can actually discuss things before the public. I don't know the inner workings or the logistics behind doing that, but I'd be willing to work with everyone to figure out a way that we can actually have these conversations before the public. Dr. Rasheen, if you could use descriptive language in the future rather than gestures, it would be greatly appreciated.
I just hold it over.
No, I understand, I understand. Listen, lastly, I just wanna say this. I'm humbled to have this honor to be able to do the people's work, but I think that we can do better, and I think that we can do it before the public, and I think that we can offer the, take input from the public. And however we do that, whether it's on this budget, whether it's on decisions that we need to make moving forward, we need to really give some serious consideration to it, because one of the, some of the feedback that we receive is that things are happening in bathrooms, and that the public doesn't have input. And, you know, I hate to say it, but even with this subcommittee, the public is not gonna have input. We've got 28 days to come to consensus on something, and the public is not gonna have that input. So, Mayor Parker, I went to a workshop that you and Councilman Pruitt hosted last year, where you invited the public. I'd like to invite you to a workshop, but I think if Councilman Zone would join me in hosting, we can have a workshop over the course of the next 14 to 28 days so that the public can actually provide some input on the budget, where we can discuss it until we actually come together as a council and figure out a way to make workshops happen. But I would invite all the council colleagues to attend that workshop, but I think that we need to have these discussions before the public, and they, you know, the public, they're entitled to see their government at work. So, with that, I yield the floor.
And just another item on Cedar Lane, is it the county, I know it's a county road, is it the county that's responsible in repaving Cedar Lane?
Yes, the county is responsible from curb to curb, roadside to curb.
Can we send, this is also something that I think is, I've gotten a lot of complaints about as far as this actual street condition. Can we send a strong letter to the county requesting that they consider Cedar Lane to be repaved?
Well, there's two, there's two streets that the county is considering repaving right now, I believe it's River Road and Teaneck Road. Cedar Lane is not in, you know, bad condition compared to those roads, so we're gonna get those two roads repaired.
I know, but it is, it is in bad, it is in bad condition. I mean, I have, I've received complaints about it, and I don't know if you wanna go out there, take a look.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, but then if you agree, then we can send the letter to the...
Before I just go to Dr. Pruitt, the Budget Subcommittee did meet, and during committee reports, I will be asking for a report of that meeting.
Okay, Dr. Rasheen, you raised a question that I'd like to get answered tonight, Stanley and Mr. Browden. Can we, in the bidding process, put the minimum required quality of materials to be used in the bid?
Yes, you can put that in your specs.
And let me just add, we always put that in, but bidders are allowed to bid equivalents, and they're gonna argue that the product that they wanna supply is an equivalent. So, that's a whole aspect of bidding that these contractors engage in. They wanna provide an alternative, and they're gonna prove, or we're gonna have to disprove, maybe in court, that the product that they want to provide is equivalent or not equivalent.
Let me decide that issue. Just let's take Cedar Lane streetscape, which is a common topic at this council. The specifications for the cement for the sidewalk were state specs, which were excellent specs, and the testing, when we had it tested, the strength exceeded what was called for. The problem wasn't with the strength of the cement. That was, at first, that's what we thought the problem was. We hired outside experts, they conducted tests, and the tests came back supporting the strength of the concrete. It all had to do with the curing and how we supervised, when I say we, meaning Teaneck, supervised that part of the contract. So, it had zero to do with the quality of the cement that was used in the project. So, but yes, to answer your question, you could set whatever minimum standards you want to in any set of specs. The issue the manager raises, that could become a problem, it may not be a problem, depending how objective the specs are. When you talk about cement, there are certain formulas that are used, et cetera, those are fairly objective type of specifications. When you call for a particular product, that's where you may have a problem in terms of the equivalent of that product. But as far as you could create whatever objective standard you want, at whatever level you want, and there are certain state minimums that you have to have in certain construction projects, et cetera, but if you wanna have a higher level, you surely could have a higher level, and that would be part of the specifications developed by the architect, engineers, et cetera, those who write the specs. But the answer to your question is yes, you could do it.
Is there hope, or is there no hope?
It's not a question, it's up to, it's up to the person who designs the project to decide what the product is, and it's up to the council, before they go out to bid, to be satisfied with that criteria, or what criteria was used in the specifications. You approve all bids, and it's to be totally appropriate for council to familiarize itself with the conditions or the specifications and the standards, and be satisfied on how those standards were arrived at, that all could be done. The answer is yes, there's no reason it can't be done.
Some hope, but not a lot, okay. Next question, I met with the Teaneck Creek people in terms of the vandalism in the park, and apparently, it's happened many, many times. And Mr. Browden, is there any participation of our law enforcement people in terms of monitoring that in any way?
Yes, they have a regular directed patrol where they're checking the conservancy on a regular basis, and they have made arrests recently in, you know, people in the conservancy.
Last comment, the budget, this is the seventh one, and the process clearly is not in place for last year's budget, but let's hope we can get it in place for next year's budget, and we're gonna do the best we can to make it work for everybody. I'm gonna pass for now.
Pass. Councilor Shaw?
When I was a kid, I don't know if people still use this trope today, but if there was some worthwhile goal that people wanted to see accomplished that they felt was not, the remark would be, if they could put a man on the moon, why can't they do something? And I think Jane Irwin, who unfortunately has left, has started the trope, if we can spend millions on a soccer field, with all due respect, it's not just a soccer field. But I think there's a giant question, and looking at where we are now, we have a beautiful sportsplex that doesn't have bathrooms. We have a township, as I said, seven months into the year, where we don't have a budget. And I think it is important to go forward, it is important to deal with the problem. But one of the things that I do in the professional world is root cause analysis. It's not enough to just solve a problem, but to go back and figure out why the problem occurred, and what can we do to prevent this same problem from happening over and over and over again. And I think the number one lesson, and I think this really goes to what Jane Irwin said, Art Vaskey's remarks, Howard Rose, Dr. Powers, Leslie McKeon, Naomi Kramer, Tom Abbott's remarks, is a lack of transparency. And I think people, the public, needs to see the work of the public done in public. And I think on so many levels, the lack of workshops is a fundamental issue that addresses the root cause of so many of these issues that we're facing. Not being able to be in a position where the proposed ordinance, which divides the formal session from the work session, I mean, we're at 10:20 already, and we're going to be trying to finish before 11 o'clock, and we will have barely a half hour to 40 minutes to discuss the issues that face us and that need to be resolved. It is critical that we get this information out to the public, it is critical that residents have agendas, that agendas be ready not just a day before, but they're ready several days before. In going through these ordinances, it should not be necessary for the township manager to provide an explanation of what the ordinances are. If we are sitting at a meeting and the township council doesn't know enough information to determine what these ordinances are, there's something wrong. And we need to have enough backup information behind these ordinances to allow the members of the township council, to allow the members of the public to make informed decisions. I am too concerned about the subcommittee. I think it's critical that we make it clear that the Budget Subcommittee report back all of its recommendations, all of its considerations, so that the full council has an opportunity to consider all of the options that may be worth considering. But I think in terms of a budget, I think this shouldn't be something where a few council members create their own special meeting, we should have special meetings. We should be scheduling a special meeting or two so that we can have a workshop that is dedicated to working on the budget and going through the options we have.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Okay? And I think that one of the things that disappointed me about the July 1 reorganization meeting, as I was sitting there, I said, you know, I probably should have made a motion to add a special meeting or two, and to have scheduled that on July 1. And part of the reason I didn't do that is because I hadn't had an opportunity to see that until I sat down at 6 o'clock. And I think that all these things, getting that information out, providing that information to the public, is so critical to ensure that we do the work of the public that has not been done, and that is sitting here outstanding, and I hope that we can move forward, not just by ignoring the past, but by learning from it. Thank you.
I just said to county, I mean, to Deputy Mayor Katz, what do you think about doing a public budget meeting? We just said that to one another, and I was gonna make a comment on it, so thank you for mentioning it. We need to move the consent agenda. Mr. Manager, or the Attorney, do you have anything that you needed to add?
Be it resolved that the council authorizes a public hearing to be set for August 12, 2014, at 8:00 p.m., or assume thereafter, as the agenda allows, for a public hearing concerning the application for funds for an ADA trail located at 640 River Road in Resolution K was the resolution... And Resolution K was the resolution which was read into the record by the clerk dealing with the subcommittee. And I believe the clerk has a, as you said, a special meeting for, the clerk has a special meeting for Planning Board, you're going to nominate Planning Board on the new business, Planning Board members, et cetera. So why don't the clerk read that resolution?
Be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of T-Nak that the 2014 annual council meeting schedule established by way of Resolution 137-2014, adopted by the Township Council on July 1, 2014, be amended as follows. Add special meeting Monday, July 21, 2014, 8:00 p.m. Purpose to appoint members to the Board of Adjustment and Planning Board, and the meeting will be located in council chambers at 818 T-Nak Road. Be it further resolved by the Township Council of the Township of T-Nak that the 2014 annual council meeting schedule established by way of Resolution 137-2014, adopted by the Township Council on July 1, 2014, also be amended as follows. To amend the legal opening time from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 12, making the start time 6:00 p.m., opening up in the council chambers, and then following in the manager's office to allow council to enter into closed session by way of adoption of a resolution, to provide additional time for the new council to discuss matters in closed session, including contract negotiations, legal issues, and negotiation updates. And be it further resolved that copies of the resolution will be sent to the record in the Joe Standard posted on Municipal Building Walking Board, and one copy will be kept on file in Township Clerk's Office for examination.
I have a question. Do we need to add a closed session to the July 21 meeting?
You can adopt a resolution before you enter, but I'm allowing the time to start.
For the 21st? No, the 21st I'm speaking about, because Councilmen Castle and Sawn will be interviewing the expired term applicants for the Planning Board and Board of Adjustment.
We can adopt a resolution.
I think if the only purpose of that meeting is to appoint the Planning Board members and the Board of Adjustment members, I think the legal opening of the meeting could be advertised to 7:00, as soon as you've finished the closed session, and come out and make your appointments.
Okay. But it'll give us an opportunity to discuss it.
The legal opening will be 7:00. Forget the 8:00. You don't need 8:00. Legal opening, 7:00, and go into closed session to discuss whatever you want concerning the interviews, and then come out and make the appointments. As long as you nominate the appointments tonight.
Sure.
Okay.
I think Councilman Castle would like to add something to the resolutions dealing with special meetings. Would you?
I would. Just looking at the calendar, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule two special meetings since, in honor of Mohammed, since we seem to have four nodding heads on the day, is that perhaps we, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule two special meetings on the 22nd and on the 29th, so that we can actually discuss the budget before the public. I think I need a second, right? I'll second.
The 22nd.
The 22nd is the next Tuesday, and then we have the 29th. So just.
I would prefer to make the 21st a special meeting. Just have the special meeting that day than have to come back on the 22nd.
So I amend my motion, the 21st and then the 29th. And the 29th is the last Tuesday of the month. Second.
So the meeting scheduled for the 21st would be for the appointments and for the discussion of the budget?
Yes.
Okay. But no other action is being taken other than the appointments. The budget is a workshop type of discussion. Floyd.
Councilman Castle?
So that's the whole resolution?
29th is an issue for me.
Yes.
You don't need a separate resume. Add that to that.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
The 29th is an issue for me. Is that okay for you?
Why don't we start with one, and then if we see we need a second, we can do that.
The 21st I'm available, but the 29th is questionable. There's a holiday the following week.
So then Resolution L to reflect that you're going to be making appointments to Board of Adjustment Planning.
August 5th is a holiday. Stan, you said August 5th is a holiday? No, it's National Net Out. Well, our next meeting after that would be the 12th. Keep it the 29th, we'll see what happens. That's fine. That's fine.
Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
21st.
Wait, what are we voting on?
Resolution A, I'm sorry, L, which is going to...
The consent agenda?
No, not the, this is adding this resolution.
Oh, yes, okay.
This is adding this resolution.
Okay.
Because you voted for the others to add now. Now I can move the entire consent.
Can we send out a notice that the 21st will be a special budget meeting?
And on the website as well.
On the website, Facebook, Twitter. The record, Suburbanite, she left.
Councilmember Sawn?
Yes.
There? There?
Oh, yes. I'm looking around for the mayor.
Sure. Let me make sure we, so that there's no confusion. We have a meeting the 21st, a meeting the 29th, and a meeting the 12th. I mean, I'm trying to keep them all on one page, so I don't get confused. I'm old, you know.
Let me just remind the council that while you have your August 12 hearing on the budget, should that, should the current budget, which was introduced, be amended in some basic forms, the August 12 meeting after the hearing will have to be, the formal vote won't come until probably the following week, because you have to advertise the changes after the hearing for at least three days. So in all likelihood, you wouldn't adopt that amended budget till the following Tuesday, August 19. You cannot adopt the amended budget on the night of the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the consent agenda, which includes raffles, RA 1390, 1391, 1392, 1393, the minutes from July 1, and Resolution D as in David, to K as in kangaroo.
L.
And you want the bill list as well? Oh, I'm sorry. And I'd like to also add L as in limber bean.
And the bill list to the amount of $11,531,519.41. Just a second.
I second it, but I'd, I like to make a motion to table the audit. I say the auditor and the audience. But can we add that to our 21st agenda? We just received it last week, Thursday.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
So, yes.
I just need to know if everybody's in favor of tabling the motions of August 12.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Any opposed?
No.
Excuse me, is this, you're tabling?
Resolution D.
Until the 12th?
No, until Monday.
Till the 21st.
21st.
Oh, the 21st.
Yeah.
Did he need to speak with us? I noticed his interview.
I just had the auditor here, in case the council has some questions. We have new council members, they may have wanted to ask some questions. So I believe the auditor's going to be available for the 21st, and we'll have him come on the 21st, unless you're prepared to ask questions.
Does any council members have any questions?
I'd like some time to just digest that packet, so I can actually have some informed questions. I apologize that you came this evening and we didn't address this earlier, but I'd very much like to wait till the 21st, before we can do that.
I have specific questions for the auditor, but I'd be willing to wait till the 21st, as long as we can do that, so that we can have that in its entirety.
Why don't we talk to the auditor, you're sitting here?
Well, we just received the audit report.
We didn't get it yet.
It came in on June 6, but we just received it last week. So I'd like some time to digest it before we fire away from the seat of our pants.
So at the meeting, Madam Mayor, at the meeting on the 21st, do you want the certified audit listed, this resolution listed? If so, we have to make sure the notice includes that, because we only spoke about the appointments of the positions.
You should change that.
So you just have to add that, as long as, it'll be added to that meeting, so you can take action on it.
If there has to be made a motion to add that to L, I'll motion that.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to amend Resolution L to include the adoption. Okay, and there's a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes, this is just to add to, oh, yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawn?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
And just for the record, on the day, there's a form certifying affidavit. I just got that back, because I didn't back out that name.
On the 21st? Yes. Mm-hmm. Old business?
Wait, no, it's a roll call.
That's all we, oh. Roll call on the consent agenda.
Oh, that's right, okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes, with an abstention on Resolution F as in Frank, G as in George, H as in Henry, raffle 1390 and the bill list.
Councilmember Pruitt? Councilmember Short?
Yes, with abstention on Resolution F.
Councilmember Sawn?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Old business? I'd like to invite the auditor up to address the council. It's okay with council?
I just wanted to give some of the new council members an overview of the process of the audit, and also give you some idea of some things to think about prior to the 21st. The process started in the fall of 2013, ended up with a completed audit June of 2014. It really finished up late May, and by the time I get all the paperwork together, whatever, it was June 6. The audit entails a sampling of the various department records of the township. It is just a sample. And what we do is we test for various procedures and internal controls. And then what we do is test those procedures and internal controls against checklist provided to us by the state of New Jersey. And the audit document will have findings at the end. Your responsibility is to read those findings and then do an affidavit that you've read them and understand them. The responsibility of the manager and the CFO is to provide you all a corrective action plan on those findings, which will all be presented to the state of New Jersey at the conclusion of this process. I understand that, you know, we'll have some more questions on the 21st, but you do have the document. And I just figured, since I was here, at least you have some guidelines of the process. The audit was included in the offering statement, as you might have heard, that we have completed our bond sale today. The audit was reviewed by Moody's, and the financial condition of the township was reviewed by Moody's. You get a very strong AA2 rating. So as far as the way the audit or the township's finances are looked at by an independent rating agency, you got a very strong rating from Moody's. We were all pleased by the outcome. I'm sure you're well aware of the interest rate that we got. It was actually less than we projected. And the financial team that you have in place here should be commended for that. And again, that's coming from Moody's and the people that are buying your bonds, not from us. Okay? All right, I'll see you on the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is old business. There is no old business. Miscellaneous, new business?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ann Center for the Board of Adjustment, Monica Honus as alternate one for the Board of Adjustment, Abram Frisch as alternate two for the Board of Adjustment, Michelle Cooper as alternate three for the Board of Adjustment.
And I would like to nominate Howard Thompson as alternate number one, no, two. Kimberly Jones as alternate number one. And Keith Kaplan, a regular appointment.
Madam Member, on the alternate, you have to pick one for one year and one for two years. You have to have alternate dates for the alternate.
Sure. So Howard Thompson for two years.
Howard Thompson for a two-year term.
Kimberly Jones for a one-year term.
And Keith Kaplan, was that a four-year term?
Yeah.
It's a regular appointment.
Okay. Just so you have the nomination. That's fine.
So these will be listed?
Okay. I made a mistake. Let me just restate that. Kimberly Jones for alternate number one for a one-year appointment. Howard Thompson, alternate number two for a two-year appointment. And the reason for the difference is because they should be staggered terms, and for whatever reason, they're expiring at the same time. So Howard was appointed most recently.
Madam Mayor, if you would, if you'd mind just clarifying for the public that these are only nominations that are being made?
Yes, these are nominations. The council will have an opportunity to actually vote on the appointments on the 21st.
I second the mayor's nomination.
And the two new council members will also have an opportunity, a clerk will set up interviews for them to meet with all of the expiring term members, for those that have been nominated. Communications, number one, we have a request for an endorsement resolution. Does any council members have any objections to participate in the Bergen County 350, I mean, 350th year celebration? Sending an endorsement resolution? Okay.
Sounds good.
Nodding heads. Next, we have a letter from the North Hudson Community Action Corporation. I think that it's something we should, did everyone have an opportunity to review it? It's relief for veterans' families. I think it's something that we should put on our website, refer to the Social Service Advisory Board, as well as our Social Service Advisory Coordinator, provide social services for veterans that may be in need. Employment services, housing counseling, financial education counseling, medical and dental care, mental health counseling, and substance abuse counseling. Any objections from council? The next item is a letter from Vantage, offering to provide mental health counseling for a stigma-free task force. I remember I was in the hospital when you discussed the task force, but I don't believe that we actually adopted a resolution to move forward with this.
I'll double check the minutes.
Yeah, I don't believe we did. But before we do, I think it's something that we should refer to the Health Department to see what his thoughts are on it, to see if it's something that's feasible for us to do, as well as to the Social Service Advisory Board.
This is item number three?
This is item number three. And I also have language from the county for a resolution that they're looking to adopt that gives all the requirements that I'll pass on to you, that you could share with both of them. Any objections to pass that information forward? Committee reports, I received a press release, draft press release from Scott Pleasant to recruit members for the Youth Advisory Board, as well as youth and adult members. So I'm looking for consent to move forward with advertising for that. And we don't have listed here council liaisons we have to assign for the vacancies. Okay. That's something we'll do next time around. Okay, we have council-listed items. Number one, Councilman Katz, and you can just line through all of yours.
Oh, no.
I mean, Castle. I gotta get you to this, Katz, Castle.
So the first one is very quick. For lack of a better term, we put civilian uniforms. I was welcomed to the council with an email from the clerk that said, welcome to the council. It's customary to give a gift of a briefcase. Please choose from the list. I carry a digital briefcase, which is an iPad, and, you know, at the price of 200 bucks, I said, you know, we all marched in the parade, and we were in the minority, because we actually did not have either shirts or a polo or anything that actually identified us as council members. We, you know, police and fire is identifiable. Every, just about every other unit that marched in that parade was easily identifiable. But I think as elected officials, that we should also be easily identifiable when we're, especially when we're doing public events, that the public can actually address, we can address their concerns. public can actually address, we can address their concerns, they can at least know who we are. So, I'd like to forfeit the 200 dollars that would have been spent on a briefcase and I'd like to recommend that that money, since it's already been approved, be used for polos or fleeces, some type of identification for us as council members when we partake in public events. We don't even have a sash. I do know that Councilman Katz, there's a photo of you with the governor and it says, Councilman, and you're, at least there was some identifying.
But I paid for that myself.
Yes, but I'd like to, I'd like to ask that my 200 dollars be used.
If you're nice to me during the holiday time, you may get on my holiday list as well.
My deputy mayor's sweatshirt, actually, it's complement of Mayor Katz.
Then, then this is what I'd like to do, I'd like to take my 200 bucks for my briefcase and use it for shirts for the council. Can we, can I do that?
I'll take the shirt.
Okay.
You're offering to pay for t-shirts for the council so when we are in the parade, we can look like we're all together?
Yes, and that so the public knows that we are council people and they can actually approach us, you know, we had festivities after and I'm sure there are residents who don't know they're council members and if we actually had some identifying t-shirt, they would have, they would have been able to approach and address us with their concern. So I just want my 200 dollars to be spent for that, if there's anything extra, let me know, I'll pay it out of pocket. My second item was correspondence.
Councilman Katz, just so you know, we do have name tags on order.
Oh.
I don't know when they'll be in, but we do have them on order.
I will still pay for the shirts.
Councilman, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's a nice gesture, but I think, I think the concept, whatever the gift the town gives, et cetera, that's the decision made, I guess, by the manager through the budget process, et cetera. Unless the council is going to vote to spend X number of dollars for t-shirts or whatever shirts it is, I don't think you have the authority to direct that the gift be converted to cash and to be used for it, I think.
I don't want the gift, so you could take it back?
So reject the gift.
I'm gonna buy you all the polos, okay? Does that work?
Sounds good.
Give the money back to the taxpayers, if we can do that, I'll buy you polos.
I'm a double X.
All right.
Drinks.
The next moving right along, I just want to say that the next thing on my list was correspondence. I want to first commend the township clerk, since I've been on council, there has been a degree of immediacy with which I've been getting correspondence and so on and so forth, very different than when Deputy Mayor Katz said that stack of paperwork there, but there has been a great improvement, so I want to thank the clerk for that. But I am somewhat concerned about critical correspondence not being received and I would like for us to, you know, allow the clerk to put forth a process, you know, the audit was completed, it was dated June 6th and we just got it last week, you know, when it came
Let me, that, that's, that's not, it might have been dated that, but the township didn't receive it then, we did not receive it on June 6th, we received it at the end of June, okay, so it was a little more in the week and gap and it was an internal issue why the council didn't receive it as soon as I would have liked to see the council receive it and I dealt with that issue.
Okay. The only examples I had, I had the township audit, I had the, I believe on May 14th, the police appointed a new chaplain and we didn't find out until June 1st. And lastly, just the, you know, the agendas, I think that if we can find a more timely way to get the agendas out, and I want to end with one, another compliment for the clerk, she has proposed a software that we all use, I had a chance to demo that software this past week, it made the agenda available digitally, she has ability to put up versions or of the agenda so that the public can actually view it while it's in the process or we as council members can do that. So I think that's something that we should all embrace, I know there's been an issue of getting us all trained on it, but I think if we can at least commit to that, it would be a useful tool moving forward and maybe we can eliminate some of the paper that seems to be piling up. Moody's, I'm happy the CFO is here, I'm happy that we've maintained our bond rating as a township. One of the, you and I had had a conversation and you had expressed that there might be some concern about certain things, I didn't get any clarity about that. So, if you could offer some, just some information about what those concerns might have been, we did get the report back from Moody's and Moody's said that one of the things that could affect our bond rating is our tax assessment appeals, our ongoing tax assessment appeals, it was in that document.
They commended us on
Mr. Manager, is it okay for Christine to address the council?
Absolutely.
Okay.
To, for the way that we've been handling those appeals and that, they commented on the declining surplus as one of the, as one of the items that could be something that could affect us in the future, that could be something that could be a downturn, but in our bond ratings, you know, as a financial team, we were able to explain to them that it's in this town's best interest to maintain a steady surplus, which does have an effect on the tax rate and that's where I was talking about in the budget session, that my concern for the balance between the needs of the taxpayers and the need to maintain the proper rating and to maintain a steady financial picture, not just take a budget one year at a time.
Can you just offer one last point of clarification and that is, in the letter from the state, it said that by not, by pushing the budget introduction to this point, it could have an adverse effect on our rating and you said that Moody's wasn't so concerned about the lateness of the budget, can you just offer some clarity there?
I don't know if I ever said that they weren't concerned about, Moody's wasn't concerned about the lateness of the budget, but it didn't, in receiving the report, it did not change what the AA, it did not change our rating and I think that there were some extenuating circumstances in this particular year that maybe Thomas Neff was not aware of, but that they were more concerned that we were maintaining the proper surplus and that there were reasons that were declining, that there was the tax appeals and that we do have a plan to combat that and that we have been using our resources to finance those tax appeals and to be able to manage those in a financially responsible manner.
All right, thank you. I know that was really the point of clarification I needed, the letter said that we might be adversely affected from our rating, so I was confused in the conversation that we had.
And it turned out that we weren't.
We were not.
It could happen, it could happen, there's a lot of places, you know, there's other places that their budgets are not adopted under different, for other circumstances.
Councilman Stone?
Christine, Mr. Brown. Moody's, as you discussed, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for our budget meeting, I know Councilman Katz is walking out, but just to make sure that he hears this, that I was tremendously appreciative to see the budget reports both through 2013 and through June 30th, 2014, I would hope that we can see going forward, that we can see on certainly on a monthly basis to see where our financial condition is, perhaps with some notations of where we are and how our financial condition is changing. Looking at the reports that you produced above and beyond the budget reports, one of the things that you showed was that surplus has been declining steadily over the past several years. At start of year 2010, we had a surplus of $7 million and we've worked that down to, by the end of this year, we're targeting about $3.5 million and that's, to me, with the addition of some one-time findings of some interfunds that we can't count on in the future. Looking at tax appeals, we may find that the 2015 revaluation settles that down, but we have a gigantic tax appeal in Glen Point that is on its way, which could be several million dollars. I think that we need to come up with a mechanism and I hope that when we meet Thursday morning as part of the Budget Subcommittee, when we meet as a, as a committee of the whole on July 21st, that we can look at our options to cut those, to make sure that we don't hit those points, what could change our rating going down, I don't know how solid or high or low AA two is, but I certainly would not want to see us going below that and I would want to make sure that we are keeping our surplus steady in the years ahead.
I don't know what the question was, but I agree.
In the interest of time, Councilman Castle, can you continue?
And the last issue was just Oprah compliance, I've had an opportunity to have conversations with the clerk and I think that as a council, we should direct the clerk to come up with some type of process that allows for these Oprah requests to be, I guess, collected, maybe through an email address, but some, we need some early warning system that an Oprah request is going to be, that an Oprah request has been made, just so that we can avoid the seven-day timeframe, you know, and putting ourselves in a situation where we might be liable, as Councilman Stone and I do know. But the clerk did have some ideas, if she could present those, but I think that we should definitely give her the autonomy to put forth a system that allows for those Oprah requests, especially the digital ones, to be, to be captured and maybe even on the website have an Oprah button so that everything is actually funneled, just like the state does to the department where the request is going, but also to the clerks if there's some redundancy, because I'd hate to see us be liable for not complying with Oprah requests.
Mayor, if I may just address that, I'm actually in contact with a extraordinary unspecified services contractor who provides a data tracking system for Oprah requests universally throughout the township for a very minimal cost and so I requested Manager Broughton to meet with me to have a webinar for the contractor, it's something that I would request eventually with his permission that you all check it out, they actually just, I asked them if they service any municipalities within Bergen County and they actually just signed a contract with Bergen County itself, so I'm kind of excited about it and it does everything compiled reports.
Is there any way just
I'll be asking you to see the webinar as well, so I'll provide, I'll put you in touch with the person who's going to do the demo after William and I.
In the interim, is there any way that we can have a mailbox, an email address for Oprah request, just something where all Oprah requests go so they don't get lost in the thousands of emails?
I mean, one of the things is, the Oprah requests are allowed, they can come into the organization at any point, so we can't say that a person doesn't have a valid Oprah if they don't send it to a particular location, so those requests can come into any part of the organization. I think the clerk has a process, but we're always looking for an improved process, she does keep a log of those requests, they come into the police department, many of them get filled on time, but I think you're absolutely correct, we're looking to improve that process, how do we make sure none slip through the cracks and she's working on that and we're going to look at that software and see how we can do a better job on it and improve the process.
The next item is Councilman Pruitt?
Yeah, at the meeting on July 1st, we had a resident who was concerned about the clear cutting of trees on property that may have buildings on it eventually, but the question is whether or not there's an ordinance we could put together to keep that from happening? What's the response, I mean, I think she sent a petition. You certainly can have an ordinance, you certainly can have an ordinance to control the type of situation that was described, I would suggest that at a workshop or at a next meeting to have Mr. Price, our planner here, to give you the alternatives or the type of criteria that can be incorporated into such an ordinance. I want you to know, previous councils have considered it and have rejected it every time, concerned that they didn't want to get involved with controlling, cutting the trees on private property, but legally you can have an ordinance to control it, it's a question of the type of criteria and procedures that you want to adopt and I would suggest that our planner be present to make appreciation to you as to what he would recommend and what some of the alternatives may be. Could we put that on the agenda to talk about next time? I think, I think unless council wants to talk about it more, I think your next step, if you're interested in doing something, is to have the planner be present.
Under some of their recommendations.
I'm sure the CHG advisory board will be in favor of limiting the cutting of trees. If you want to move forward with an ordinance, you have to hear from your planner as to what the pros and cons are of the different alternatives and the different methodology of establishing what trees could be cut, whether you should have to get a permit for it, et cetera, there are various ways of doing this, some towns have had good success, other towns have had poor success, it all depends the criteria that you utilize.
Mr. Torres, can we see some model ordinances, I know the borough of Westwood has an ordinance, restricting tree ordinances, can we just see some models so that we can have something to work with?
Sure, Jamie, is that something you can get us?
And I do believe, I think his name was Mr. Watson, Wassom, he came before us, was it Wassom? Yep, he came before us several times with proposed ordinances that didn't have approval from council, or at least a majority of the council.
So we're going to try to pull something together to deal with this issue because it really concerns those people who watched it happen and we don't need to have it, have it happen again. All right, next item on the, on my agenda, we
I'm sorry, just so I'm clear, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, so how are we moving forward?
He's getting us proposed ordinances, that's it.
I want to tell you that I fully understand and I'm sympathetic to the email and to the comments that were made about the trees, but I also believe that it's private property and I'm absolutely against any ordinance that's restricting someone being able to have their own rights on their private property. I mean, there's so many factors that go into consideration when it comes to cutting down trees, when you're doing construction, when there's hazards that are hanging over, there's even reasons why people cut it down for religious reasons and I don't want to start macro-managing the entire township's private property by saying that we have to restrict the tree cutting on private property, so I'm absolutely against it, I don't want to spend any resources on it and I don't want to spend any money on it and I don't want to waste anyone's time on it.
I just wanted to be on the workshop agenda to talk about it so that we are not ignoring that person's concern.
I'm not against talking about it.
Four nodding heads to talk about it?
I'm not against talking about it, I am against it, these are people that were in the process, have a lot of coverage and it's their private property, I apologize.
I am fully in favor of talking about it, as a township, we have ordinances that restrict the height of people's grass, we are more than willing to go over to people's homes and mow their lawns for them if they don't do it. When I look at the property on Winthrop Road that was basically clear-cut, every single growing thing, I don't know if there was an aged orange drop at the site, but basically this was, this was completely gone, there's nothing there. Many trees that could have been retained without harming the ability of the developer or the homeowner or property owner to develop that are lost and it will take decades to get those back. I think that we should look at where other municipalities have created ordinances that do balance our community's concerns as a tree sitting, that we keep these trees and that also balance the needs of property owners and I hope that by seeing those ordinances that we can, we can do that.
The only problem with looking at individual ordinances in towns, many times ordinances relate to other zoning ordinances, et cetera, that's why my suggestion of having the planner talk to you about an overall picture, to me, made more sense than to just look at isolated ordinances, which is one document out of a whole zoning code, which could be interrelated, so whatever you want to do, but that's just up to the council, so.
Next item, Councilman Pruitt?
Okay, I just think it's an item that could be in a workshop and we need to find out where the seven of us are. Next item has to do with helping people to survive in TNEC economically. We may not be able to reduce the taxes the way people would like, but we do have ways to reduce the expenses and there's two recommendations that I'd like to follow up on, one is energy aggregation, I believe Mr. Broughton and I met with two sets of companies where they come in and the whole town buys the energy from a particular company and the whole town, individual homeowners
And the whole town, individual homeowners benefit by paying less for their electricity. I think we should explore that and see if it's applicable to TNEC. The second thing is, I know a number of people who have houses that sit in the sun. And they have put solar panels on their roofs and saved approximately half the cost of the electricity. I think we should explore that and see if it's a viable recommendation for people. And if it is, we should let people know about it. Those panels do not cost the homeowner anything. It's a power purchase agreement, and you get the electricity for, for less, and you don't pay for the panels. Item number, I guess it's number seven. 51 Amsterdam Avenue. I have a letter here that everybody got where a resident at 57 Amsterdam Avenue says they've been trying to get some help for the last four years. The house on 51 Amsterdam Avenue is not lived in, and it is overgrown with milkweed and ivy and all kinds of things. And the question is, what is our policy about cutting people's lawn when they don't do it themselves? Mr. Broughton, you're on.
Well, we do have a process. Usually, we receive a complaint from a resident or a neighbor. Those complaints go to the Health Department. Health Department conducts an inspection. If it's in violation of the code, Health Department will issue a notice so the resident will have to comply. They'll usually give them about 20 days or so to comply. After that, if they don't comply, they send correspondents to my office. I approve the abatement of the property. Then it goes to the DPW, and the DPW schedules it to be cut. As I said to you in the past, we deal with a lot of these properties. Last year, it was probably a couple hundred properties that we dealt with. And the DPW, you know, maintained the lawns on a lot of the properties or at least cut it several times. This particular property, I've never heard of this address. They definitely never sent me an email. I've never heard of this address, and I'm familiar with most of them. This one I've never heard of, and no one has ever contacted me about anything for four years, and like this, and I've not taken action on it.
Okay, we're going to give you-
It's going to my attention. I already know about it.
You got it now, right?
Yes, I'm contacting the Health Department. I'll find out the status of it, and we'll see where we're going. There is a process as far as the township being able to place a lien on the property and, and get its money back. We've decided that in these cases where we're merely cutting the lawn, you know, for, we're foregoing the full process, which could probably take 90 days or more to implement to ensure that we get our money back. We're cutting the lawn and not going through an entire process. Most times, we get our money back, but it is possible that we may not get our money back. We think it's more important that we get the lawn cut to maintain the appearance of the neighborhood.
Okay, last item. A tree limb fell on a playground equipment piece last week or two weeks ago. We have a lot of concern about tree limbs in TNEC on public property. We need to hear how we're going to deal with some of that because it's a lot of it.
Well, it, I can-
Starting in the municipal green. We got some trees here with a lot of dead limbs that need to be trimmed, okay?
Yeah, I can tell you, Voughtie Park, last year, I think we went through Voughtie Park and removed 20, 30 trees, trimmed many tree branches. The municipal green does need some pruning. We have five people in our tree department. And we have to strike a balance, and we have to, we have to prioritize. You know, we have probably over 20,000 trees. That's a number that I've, that I've heard. And we have five people maintaining 20,000 trees. It's, it's a difficult process, and we have to prioritize. And we're doing it to the best of our ability.
The next item on the agenda. I received a request for an endorsement resolution for urging the state legislature and the governor to enact a statewide earned sick day policy. It's something that is sponsored, I think Senator Weinberg is one of the sponsors on it. Weinberg, Sweeney. Is there any objections to this?
Quick question. We have our own sick time liability in TNEC of about $5.5 million. I support this because I know what it is to be a parent with a sick child or even be sick myself and have to make that decision as to whether or not you go to work or stay home. But in the spirit of addressing sick time, if we could put our own sick time liability as a discussion item on the, on a future agenda, I support this, but I think that we should definitely have a conversation about our own sick time liability, since it is a-
With respect to funding it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, but there's no objections to move forward with this. And the last item I'm going to hold, it's regarding the meeting agenda, and it seems like it'll be a larger discussion if we discuss returning to workshop sessions as well as restructuring the meetings. I don't think it's enough conversation to be had at 11:10. Managers' report.
I have no additional lines.
Attorneys' report. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Attorney's attorney.
Aye.
And you pose?
Thank you for coming out tonight.